Two pounds.
That's what I thought.
Round two. I'm starting to get bored.
Well, I've been watching until you tell your.
No, they weren't coming back there.
A lot of time.
Nice young guy.
They're high and going higher. But I'll tell you another one that's disappointing.
It's it's.
When you put this way, look at the box.
Which is weird because grand who?
Seven, you guys ready? You guys ready? Seven. Good evening. I'd like to call the Fairiesburg City Council Meeting to Order, Monday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, seven P. M. Fairiesburg City Hall. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson. Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Councilmember Seis.
Here.
Councilmember Murdoch.
Here.
Councilmember Kate.
Here.
Mayor Bliss.
Here. Please rise for the invocation by.
Yes. I'd like to move that we excuse Councilmember Carlson.
Support.
Okay. Motion support. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. Please rise. Invocation by Councilmember Kate, followed by Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious God, we thank you so much for this day and all that you do for us each and every day. We ask now for your your blessings of guidance and your your leadership as we open our discussions tonight. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God.
Number five, public comments. This time on the agenda for any citizen, direct brief comments, questions, City Council. Time for public comments will be given when the agenda item is discussed. If you have a comment or question, please raise your hand to be recognized by the mayor. And for being recognized by the mayor, please give your name and address for the record. Proceed with your comment or question. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Lisa.
Lisa Royce, one seven seven zero zero Navajo. I have a question for Scott, I guess. I mean, it's been over a year and you still refuse to put Jake for an appointment on the Planning Commission. I would be bored to vote on that. I can't believe that this is the kind of stuff that is so divisive for a community that you don't even let, you know, the people, the constituents that put them up their vote. Mr. Lyons, Mr. DeWitt couldn't even be on the Planning Commission, and you put him on there because they were on the zoning board of appeals, but that little thing didn't seem to bother anybody up there. So I I I just find it, you know, you're leaving at the end of the year unless you're doing the bidding for somebody else in the audience that's trying to be mayor again. I I I I just, I don't get it. Or maybe Mr. O'Donnell is waiting to stand in line to get appointed, but I think it's wrong for citizens that come up to try to volunteer for this community and they get stonewalled from a mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, more public comments. Joe.
Joe Lyons, one six eight five seven, Virginia Avenue, Fairiesburg. Um, just a short retort to to Lisa very quickly. One of the, one of my objections to Mr. Sterling being on the on the Planning Commission, and she mentioned that I can't be on the Planning Commission because I have a, I'm a board member of the zoning board. But there is a segment of our cha- of our charter, I believe it's four point one seven, that says that relatives can't be on, can't be on boards. And Mrs. Sterling is the chair of our Recreation Department, so um, that would kind of preclude his attendance on the Planning Commission. But that wasn't my comments for this evening. I wanted to comment about the Ethics Ordinance three twenty-six. And, you know, you guys put a lot of work into that, and I appreciate it. And I think your intent was that it was going to make this a calmer city. You know, we have a bad reputation. People, it's interesting. I was talking to some people at church the other day, and they came up to me and said, what the heck is going on in Fairiesburg? And I said, I guess I don't know what you mean. And they weren't referencing this. It was just referencing that Fairiesburg always seems to be, have their shorts in a bundle. And there seems to be too much clutter amongst us, amongst amongst us Fairiesburgians. And I I think you thought, and I thought, that the Ethics Ordinance was going to resolve some of that. I think it's gone just the other direction. Because, as you well know, I've made a complaint against Mrs. Hoberg for her actions um, for having what I feel was a conspiracy against me to keep me off of the Planning Commission. I would have, I would have very, very quickly have resigned my position on the zoning board in order to be on the Planning Commission, but that's neither here nor there. So she admitted during the May fourth meeting that she had made a comment to the chairman of the of the Planning Commission that she couldn't be on the Planning Commission with me for some sordid reasons and which aren't true, but that's neither here nor there. So that, along with Councilman Carlson, having shouted, and I'll quote, "Joe, shut up." Those aren't the kind of things that are ethical in this community, or let's say shouldn't be ethical in this community. So we'll, we'll let those kind of things pass because beyond that was the response that we got from the attorney. I'm not quite sure why Mr. Bisanay came back referencing thirty-two point eight four, which is primarily financial and conflict of interest items uh, on the, in the ordinance, that he referred to and said, nothing happened here. Nothing happened. The man was shouted down. He was conspired against whatever. Nothing happened here. So I, I contacted Mayor Bliss, and I said, Mayor, I don't like what's going on, and he kind of agreed with me that maybe that response wasn't right. So we had, so we had Mr. Bisanay take a look at thirty-two point eighty-three. And he came back and said something to the effect that that if there was an offense, uh, it had to be adjudicated by the law. And I thought the law was the ordinance, and I would think that you thought the law was the ordinance, but apparently it's not, according to Mr. Bisanay. I'm not quite sure where we go with this, but Lisa, you made a comment a couple of weeks ago about Joe Lyons making these complaints is costing the city money through the attorney. Well, it would appear to me that if if you want to adjudicate anything with this city, you've got to take them to court. Do you know what it costs to take someone to court? We're looking at five to ten thousand dollars. Now, that would be my side. I don't really want to spend that kind of money, but if I were to spend that kind of money, the city would have to spend that kind of money, too. And I don't think, I don't think that's what we, what it was meant for this ordinance. Enough said, I guess. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Come on up.
I'm on number one nine zero three four Sunset Trail. And I just wanted to thank the city, putting in the speed tables out on North Shore Road. My wife and I walk all the time out there, plus our dog. Made a huge safety difference, amazing difference in the area there. And I'm guessing you guys are hearing both sides of that, but uh, from a safety standpoint, it's done a phenomenal job, and we're trying to drive a little slower to make sure that that people are safe. So thank you.
You're welcome. Any more public comments? Dr. Nick.
Nick and Barbara Patrangelo, one nine two one two North Shore Drive. Just to corroborate what you said by Mr. John, from Mr. Humbert. Uh, thank you very much for the voting and putting the speed tables. I am sure there are people that are not overjoyed that are going up and down, but it has slowed the traffic down tremendously. And the population riding bikes, pushing baby carriages, walking dogs, doubles, I don't know about doubles, but it it increases every year, and it's steady. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more public comments? Hearing none, moving on. Uh, number six, consideration for approval consent agenda. A, approve of the June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, City Council meeting minutes is printed. B, adopt a resolution to lease a portion of the premises at one seven five two zero Ridge Avenue to the Gateway Church. I did find a typo in the June twenty-sixth minutes. And it's regarding twenty-three dash one two three. Uh, Mr. Kate was actually here. He was present. Mr. O'Donnell was absent. Can you make that correction, Craig? June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three? Twenty-sixth.
No, on the June twenty-sixth.
Oh, no, this this wasn't about the special meeting. This is for the regular meeting.
Right. Right, Bill was here.
Oh, okay, so, so.
Debbie was gone, but Bill was here.
Yeah, so, so present and husband are correct, but at twenty.
Yeah, twenty-three dash one two three. Yep, Bill was here.
I was here. So switch Kate to O'Donnell.
Yep, Tim was gone. You guys see it? Okay. Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve a consent agenda.
Okay, motion.
Support.
Motion support. Further discussion?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a comment on the agenda tonight, if I can.
Yep.
I'd like to, as we approve this, we remove seven K, as we've already voted on this once, and it sets a bad precedence for our city that we continue to vote on the same thing. I I am making a motion for that.
I'll support.
So approval of the consent agenda with the uh, minutes change that Mayor Bliss stated, and removal of seven K from tonight's agenda.
Okay, motion support.
Your Honor.
Further discussion? Yes, Tim.
Um, I'd like to make an addition to the agenda.
Okay.
We have a, it came to my attention that Councilmember Montgomery did not file the proper paperwork for his candidacy. And that needs to be addressed. The I believe the city attorney was wrong in his opinion. Uh, the it is clearly stated in the Michigan State Elections Law that it's up to the city to determine the, what is proper, and Councilmember Montgomery did not sign one of his petitions. Your Honor, what does that have to do with tonight's agenda? Well, I'm bringing it up because I need to we need to have the, I would like the city attorney to readdress this, looking at specific parts of the election law and our charter. It is clearly stated what is needs to be done, and it was not done. And before you go, just as FYI, I do have a degree in criminal law. So I do know what I'm talking about when I talk about the laws. The city attorney already gave his advice on this, if you want. He, he did. So you're saying that you know more than him? No, I'm stating that I want him to revisit this because his opinion was, he wants that the I believe the, the, his opinion was wrong. And it needs to be revisited because he did not make the correct, I don't believe he made the correct ruling on this, because it clearly states in the election law and the city charter that if there is a question, it reverts to the city charter, and the city charter requires fifteen signatures, and we'll only submitted twelve valid, or one petition that was valid. The second petition was not signed, therefore it is not valid. Therefore, he is not eligible to run for election. Isn't that up to the county clerk? No, well, that's up to the the city. It was reverted back to the city for determination.
Your Honor, before we go any farther, we have a motion on the table to approve the consent agenda. It's been seconded. You should take care of that motion, and we have another motion to remove seven K. You should take care of those two motions before we have further discussion.
Okay. All right. Further discussion on removing six K from the agenda, seven K, excuse me.
Well, the consent agenda was the first motion.
Oh, consent agenda. All right, let's do that.
Motion to to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
But if we approve it, then we, yeah, so, yeah, but we have to vote on it. I made the motion, so we have to vote it. Well, make your own choice. Just so everybody is aware of what, yeah, what we're about to do. So if we want to revisit seven K, then exactly. Okay, go ahead. I'm ready.
Okay, we already had a motion and support to remove seven K, so we're at further discussion on K. Tim, did you have further discussion on K?
Yes, Your Honor, I I was the one that requested this be put on the agenda because there is obvious conflict of interest and bias placed forth by voting members of the council. And it needs to be addressed again because this is, this person is the only volunteer that has been not reappointed to to a position. That, and in this, and in that discussion, we need to be, be both Councilmember Murdoch and Councilmember Montgomery need to recuse themselves because of their conflict of interest, and this, they cannot render. I'm, I'm just waiting for the audience to stop. Stop laughing. This is a serious matter. We're talking about people who is, who went out there and volunteered for a position. Did not, at any point, commit any violation that would not allow her to be appointed to that position. The reasons that were brought up were biased opinions. They can, the ethics law that was passed by this council states that all ordinances have to be, and all issues have to be considered on an unbiased manner. Obvious bias recuses, that creates a conflict of interest, and those people need to recuse themselves from discussing or voting on the matter. Therefore, I am requesting that this is kept, be kept on the, on the agenda. It needs to be addressed and addressed in appropriate, proper manner.
Councilman O'Donnell, you're, you're essentially saying if we disagree with you, it's more biased and we can't vote.
Biased when it comes to Jake Sterling.
So, so this individual, we unanimously appointed to another board that same night. So, so I don't think there's anything biased going on.
Okay, so you just said I'm argumentative. That's the only argument you had against this, this individual. That is why you did not want to vote her on. So argumentative, I'm not argumentative. I'm just discussing the issue. A person who is falsely, falsely, or is accused of committing a violation of an ordinance that does, or a rule or regulation that is, does not exist has the right to defend themselves. Any human being, anybody that that is out, that is dealing out there, has the right to defend themselves. Whether you consider it argumentative, that's up to you. I consider it defending yourself against false accusations. And it's false because it was, it was a rule or regulation that did not exist. It was pure and simple dislike for that person. And also in, I believe it was in revenge for not considering Jake Sterling for the Planning Commission.
I'm not sure how we make that connection to to Mr. Sterling, Tim. Um, the
Can, can you give me one reason, one rule or violation that that, that that person committed?
I don't, I don't think she committed any violation. I never said that she did that I know of.
At the, at the at one of the, the meetings, one of the Recreation Committee, he was accused of violating a rule or regulation that did not exist. And she defended herself as anybody would. Name, name one rule or one regulation that makes her not appropriate to uh, assigned to that committee.
Tim, I, I never brought this up in the first place about not voting for this because we're ruled. We all have our reasons for voting different ways. I, I can tell you that's not mine personally. I, I shared it with the entire Rec Commission last week, or early, yeah, I guess it was last week. Um, I don't, I don't know how to. The only thing that that indicates bias, if you have the potential for a financial gain, none of us stand to have a financial gain here, so.
No, that's not the only thing that creates a bias or a conflict of interest. It has, it has a.
But who are you to say I don't like someone or tell me my feelings about someone?
I'm stating that I want it reconsidered. It needs to be reconsidered because I don't believe it was it was voted on in a non-biased.
So this sets a precedence that we continue to bring things up everywhere. You can put them on the agenda until it gets passed because you don't like the results of a vote. That sets a bad precedence for our council.
Bad precedence for the council. Writing a wrong is not a bad precedence.
Your opinion.
In my opinion, yes.
In your opinion, not in council's opinion.
And you're speaking for the council. You need to speak for yourself.
We voted already. It's been done.
I guess at, at this point, all we can do is, is vote.
I'm, I'm in agreement with Tim. I think it should be voted on. I wasn't at that June nineteenth meeting where Mrs. Hop was denied a position on the Recreation Committee. And I don't think there's any good reason for not reappointing somebody. So.
So what are we voting on, Your Honor?
One, one, Your Honor.
Do we do public comments for consent agenda?
Well, we're in discussion, so.
So what are we voting on? Consent agenda or removal of seven K or both?
Yep, consent agenda includes the removal of K.
So consent agenda includes the removal of K. That's the motion on the table.
Correct. So now we're in discussion, so if we're discussing it, the general public can comment on it. Rebecca, do you want to come up to the podium?
My only question is, is yes, during the June, the June Recreation Commission meeting, Councilmember Montgomery did state that I violated a policy or procedure of the city, which then I confirmed with City Manager Buzzinger that there is no policy or procedure on the books that prevented me from speaking with a consultant. Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're a little.
Council, I mean.
Another member may have mentioned that, but I don't.
Did I confirm with you following the meaning of that question, if there are policy or procedure that was in place?
She stated was correct.
But I don't, I don't disagree with what Mrs. Hop is saying. I'm just saying that I never said that. It wasn't in the minutes, but we have more public comment, Your Honor.
Okay, Regina.
Regina, Regina Schilberg, one seven five four two Parkwood Drive. I do recall that I was universally approved for the PC, and I was the only candidate. And you went after me. So did Rebecca Hop. So did you. So how do you explain that dichotomy? You have different rules according to who you, who controls you, basically. And I'd really like to know where you got your criminal justice degree, because I have your resume at home, and I never saw any college that you went to for that. So I don't think you know more than our attorneys. And this has got to stop. This has just got to stop. I have no problem with using an attorney to check what's viable, but we're using attorneys continualistically to go after people. And one thing you need to know about the ethics policy, you sign a paper, when you sign a complaint, it says that you are, if you lie, you can be held accountable for a fine or for the legal fees of the person you're going after. But I found out from our lawyer that that's not part of the ordinance. So it has no teeth. So you need to make that part, when someone lies in an ethics complaint, you need to make that part of the ordinance itself, that there is a, a retribution for that. And please explain how you could go after me when I'm the only universally one hundred percent approved PC member, and I was not qualified with three master, with two master's degrees and service and classes. Tell me how, how you figured that.
Yes, Lisa.
I'm not sure. I was at a Rec Committee meeting when Ms. Hop was there, and she basically said she wasn't going to vote for, I, I, I believe the, the incident that we're talking about, it was the hike with Mr. Post, correct? And I think what, what I was meant to understand from that whole thing is she was using it as a political thing to kickstart her mayor thing, which she can't do. And then it quickly changed, and at that meeting, I recall her saying she wasn't going to show up. She thought we should cancel the whole thing after everybody did everything for it already. Um, I believe Heather was at the meeting. I believe Sandy was at the meeting, and then she showed up at the whole thing. So I'm, I'm a little confused, and then you're sitting there going after, maybe she hasn't done anything. I don't know. I don't go to the Rec Commissions very often, but that concerned me that she was using a, a public event, and Scott, you were also doing it to help her. So I, 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 I don't, you know, you should look in the mirror, Mr. Lyons, talk about getting the place riled up. I mean, you've been doing it for years, and it's been quiet, and then all of a sudden you didn't get on the Planning Commission, and then the whole thing blows up again. It, it, it's astonishing. And, and, and Jake is just one of those collateral people that has done nothing wrong. You just don't like him, so you won't even put him up for a vote. And then you let Mr. Lyons sit up here and speak for, what, five minutes, when the limit is three, and you're both shaking your head, you know, when it's time's up, but, you know, you.
I usually give the people benefit of the doubt. If they need to speak a little bit longer than three minutes, I will let them do that. Okay, further discussion? Okay, further discussion?
Voting for the consent agenda or the removal? I, I think it should be, uh, this should be a separate, uh, issue.
Right. So we're voting on the consent agenda, removing K. Is that correct?
That's the motion before you stated just a few minutes ago.
And then we'll get to add your agenda item. Or does?
I think it needs to be.
Needs to be in?
It needs to be separated.
Right.
The, 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 the removal of, of.
Okay.
Should be, uh, should not be part of that.
Of the approval of consent agenda?
Two separate motions.
Your honor, we can't vote, vote for this agenda if that is not settled first. So the K has to be settled first. Because we can't approve the, we can't do that.
We have two motions on the floor, right Craig? One is to approve the consent agenda and one is to remove item seven K from this. We need to vote on each one of them. So if we have vote to approve this consent agenda, then we're voting essentially to approve seven K in the agenda.
Not proving the agenda, you're, you're approving the consent agenda, seven A and, or six A and B.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Okay.
So that's just for six A and B.
Yep. So let's have a roll call vote.
For, for the, this is for the consent agenda?
Correct.
Okay.
Consent agenda is amended with my amendment for the minutes and then removal of K. Because we have to put it together. Is that correct, Craig?
Together or your separate motions?
Move of K has to be a different motion.
Okay.
Yes.
We have two different motions on the floor.
Okay.
Consent agenda, so item six A and six B.
Okay. All right. So let's vote on that. Consent agenda, six A and B with the typo correction. No further discussion. Uh, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Now the second motion is seven K. Uh, removal of seven K from the agenda. Correct? Okay. No further discussion because we already discussed it. Roll call please on that one. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sias?
Yay.
Councilmember Murdoch? Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilmember Kate?
Yes.
And Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Blis?
Uh, no. Okay, seven, new business presentation, Ottawa County Sheriff Steve Kemper. Twenty twenty-two annual report?
Well, good evening, board.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. I just want to give you a brief overview of the twenty twenty-two annual report and also touch on, uh, Fairiesburg City here in that report. So again, it's my honor to present to you, uh, tonight, the brief overview. Uh, you've been provided this evening with a copy of the comparative summary of the overall county numbers and a section, uh, in the back, the last two pages, uh, pertained strictly to Fairiesburg City. Also, the full annual report is on our website. If you ever have time, I would encourage you to take a look through that. Uh, the comparative summary that you have in front of you really just hits our numbers countywide and for Fairiesburg City. Uh, within our annual report, uh, is a complete, uh, layout of all of our units and divisions of the sheriff's office. So just to give you kind of a, it's been a while since I've been here, uh, just an overview of the sheriff's office operations and kind of how we do business. Well, the sheriff's office primary mission is to provide a safe and secure environment in Ottawa County by preserving public order, reduce crime and provide safe and secure environments in our communities. As sheriff, I do stress this very heavily, victims of crime continue to be our top priority. Our goal is to identify, understand and address issues within our communities. And we accomplish this through collaborative efforts, solving, problem solving and working closely with our citizens, community partnerships and other organizations within Ottawa County. We also follow, and this is, uh, on our annual report and on our website, our, uh, mission statement, core values. The members of the sheriff's office work through the core values of professionalism, respect, integrity, dedication, excellence, equality and diversity. Our vision of safe, secure communities where each citizen is valued. Each employee embraces integrity as the cornerstone to build public trust. Honesty, trust, mutual respect and respecting the constitutional rights of individuals in which the sheriff's office and the community work together. Our mission is to provide professional, ethical, law enforcement and correctional services and to support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of the state of Michigan as in our oath of office that I take and each deputy takes for our agency. Again, uh, we work very hard to preserve public order, reduce the fear and provide that safe and secure environments in our communities. As we all know, there's been many challenges facing law enforcement in the past few years, uh, and we know that there's more ahead of us. The Ottawa County Sheriff's Office and its employees stand ready and able to maintain its delivery of quality, professional and ethical law enforcement services. If you have an opportunity to look at our annual report, myself and my executive team, did something a little bit different. Uh, you'll see a new organizational chart, uh, and did not put a copy, uh, in your handout, uh, basically because of the size of it. But the purpose, uh, of our new organizational chart, you know, most businesses always put the boss at the top and everybody filters down. What we've done is we've taken that organizational chart, flipped it upside down, put myself at the bottom and then pyramid it up. So the purpose of the inverted leadership pyramid is to maximize communications between members of the organization and create a flexible, more responsive team. This works by flipping that pyramid so the employees are adding value to the organization and opening the paths of communication. Servant leadership focuses on the prosperity of the people within the organization. Servant leaders unlock potential in others by placing their needs at a higher priority than their own. And since doing this, uh, we've had great success and I, again, I find, uh, no problem being at the bottom of that chart now with everybody else above me greatly has improved our organization. So a quick overview of the entire county. I'd like to start with our index crimes, which are violent crimes, murder, criminal sexual conduct, robbery and aggravated assault. Uh, I'm pleased to say in twenty twenty-two, they were down, but just a very, very small percent. One of the things that we're seeing in aggravated assaults through the county, we are seeing more and more violent assaults. Uh, these are also very complicated investigations for us. And our property crimes in twenty twenty-two, uh, were also down compared to twenty twenty-one. In our index crimes, some of these, uh, we saw increases such as sex offenses, family offenses, fraud, forgery, embezzlement and negligent homicide. And I want to note, when I talk about negligent homicide, when you see that charge, that's not the homicide that is committed. Negligent homicide covers a, a traffic accident where somebody is charged with the death of another person in a traffic accident. One of our concerns that we've seen a lot of, uh, this past year are, uh, frauds and scams, uh, committed against people. And, uh, it covers a very wide spectrum of ages, uh, of the victims. And we've seen losses anywhere from several hundreds of dollars to upwards of over a hundred thousand dollars that people have lost. A lot of this money, uh, is scammed out of people, either by phone or other type of communications or the internet. And, uh, that money is normally gone within seconds when they hit the button. Find that it mostly leaves the United States and heads overseas. Makes it very difficult for us, uh, to track and we do work with the FBI, uh, out of Grand Rapids and sometimes we are successful. One of the really neat things that I've seen in our community is like the Walmarts, the Myers, the Best Buys. If they see a person in there buying a lot of gift cards, they now actually take the time to question that person. And we've prevented, just collaborating with these large box stores, uh, we've prevented the loss of thousands and thousands of dollars of people being scammed out of their savings. Because the clerk will approach them, talk to them. They'll call us and have us intervene. And when they lay it out, it's one of the classic schemes. So our calls, uh, overall throughout the county, uh, total of just over seventy thousand calls, that was up about two percent from twenty twenty-one. Uh, I know people don't like to hear the word COVID, uh, but during COVID, our numbers fell. Uh, but our numbers are on track of going continuously up about two to two and a half percent a year right now. Uh, as we see those increases, we continue to work with our partnerships to address service levels and the growing changes in our communities. But we'd like to just touch on the handout in front of you, the last, uh, two pages. And on the page where it's, uh, bold print in top for Fairiesburg City, these are the numbers for Fairiesburg City last year. Overall, I'm happy with your numbers. Uh, we don't see any real large spikes in crime. If you look, uh, count, uh, for Fairiesburg City, you have one thousand five hundred and seventeen calls for service handled by the sheriff's office. Uh, that was up in twenty twenty-one. There was one thousand three hundred and three calls. Uh, traffic, uh, continuing, we, tonight, I believe those gentlemen laughed, but, uh, traffic is becoming always a number one concern. Uh, all the community speaking that I do, we can talk about crime and everything, but that topic always shifts to traffic. Uh, as our county grows approaching three hundred thousand, uh, we hear this throughout the county. We hear it, like we heard tonight, North Shore Drive, some of the other roads in the area are becoming busier. Uh, but again, uh, traffic tickets issued, uh, in the city of Fairiesburg. You notice twenty twenty, again during COVID, our numbers just plummeted. Uh, but they are rising back up, uh, due to a lot of looking back at a lot of the citizen complaints from your citizens here in the city. Uh, tickets were up to four hundred and forty-nine in the city last year. Um, your arrest, we're at about two hundred and forty-six adults were arrested and three juveniles were charged in twenty twenty-one. Larger number, uh, of those arrests, obviously drunk driving and we're coming across a lot more, uh, what we call warrant hits when we stop somebody and there's a warrant. So if they're arrested within the city, uh, that stat falls here under that warrant arrest, even though it may be a warrant out of Muskegon or Grand Rapids or elsewhere. I'd like to also touch just briefly, uh, our corrections division. A lot of people, uh, kind of forget sometimes that the sheriff's responsible for the jail out at the Fillmore facility in Washtalo. Uh, last year we booked in four thousand eight hundred and eighty-five people into the Ottawa County Jail. Uh, that is up. Uh, we continue, one of the things I really stress at the jail facility, um, I tell people, I don't want you to come. I have the opportunity to go over to the jail and walk through the jail, talk to the citizens in our jail. And I talk about citizens, we're referring to inmates, but we don't call them inmates in our facility. They're citizens. Uh, there are some good people in that jail facility. There are some people that belong in that jail. Uh, but our goal is, is that when they leave our facility, they leave a better person. They leave better prepared to go back out into the community and be a productive citizen in this community. And that's done, uh, through a lot of the programs that we've introduced into the jail. We continue to work with courts with the diversion programs, work release type programs. Uh, inside the jail, we offer programs such as the GED program, substance abuse programs, Reach the Forgotten Ministries, uh, career development, uh, a group called Seventy Times Seven that works with men and working with them to find job placement when they leave, uh, the facility and the Women's Resource Center out of Grand Rapids. Seventy Times Seven and the Women's Resources are the two new ones that came in our facility. And I just cannot believe the outstanding work that they do. Uh, we're not seeing a high return rate of people at our facility. The Women's Resource Center, they actually come in before somebody's released from the jail. They work with the women in the jail with resumes, where to find jobs and even provide them the clothing that they need to go out and be presentable for interviews and work on their interview skills. The program with the Women's Resource Center was so popular that the male population in the jail was trying to sign up for the Women's Resource Center. Uh, but that's where we brought Seventy Times Seven in to work with the, the male, uh, population. Uh, one alarming thing that we continue to see over the last couple of years at the sheriff's office, we maintain two detectives assigned just to the Children's Advocacy Center. So in twenty twenty-two, these two detectives investigated one thousand fifty criminal sexual conduct and abuse cases against children with two hundred and sixty referrals to the Children's Advocacy Center. Our detectives also handled eight hundred and eighty-eight law enforcement notifications from Child Protective Services. This is a concern. These are the children of our community that are being abused, either physically or sexually. These numbers are staggering and, uh, we just had a meeting last week with the Children's Advocacy Center. The good news is, is that we've seen a little bit of a decline, but not much. This again is a, the center down in Holland that handles everything in Ottawa County from the forensic interviewing, preparing the cases for court and assisting the prosecutor. Some of the other concerns in Ottawa County that we see domestic violence, crimes against children, assaults continue to rise. Also is a concern about mental health. Uh, those incidents are on the increase. Those are almost daily incidents for us as a mental health situation. We also are dealing with mental health, not only on our road patrol side, uh, but also within our correctional facility. So what have we done? I have the opportunity to serve on the, uh, Mental Health Divergent Council underneath the governor of the state of Michigan. And, uh, what we have done, uh, this is a nonpartisan issue, mental health. Like to make that statement. But the steps that we have taken and the support that we've received from all of our legislators in Lansing has been phenomenal. As far as training law enforcement, how to deal with and recognize mental health incidents. That person may not need to go to jail. What we can do is we can divert them. We have one deputy now that's assigned to handle just crisis intervention calls in the county or do that follow-up. That's what we have seen as key is the follow-up. Uh, I'll be honest with you, years ago, people were booked into the Ottawa County Jail, they were arrested, they were having a mental health incident. They were arrested, put in the jail, released, next night, they're out dealing with them again. That has gone away and has completely changed. They now have help within our facility and they have help when they leave our facility. And again, it has started to cut down on those people returning to the facility. Uh, community policing, as you know, it's our philosophy here, uh, in Fairiesburg and the surrounding communities. It still has proven to be the valuable tool and plays a vital role, uh, in our law enforcement efforts. We collaborate with communities, local leaders, business leaders, school districts, courts, faith-based organizations and many others to identify areas and needs to develop and deploy effective strategies to address those needs. Uh, in closing, I first and foremost want to thank the citizens of Fairiesburg City, this council, for your continued support of the employees of the Ottawa County Sheriff's Office who serve in this noble profession. There's no higher honor, uh, than public service, protecting, uh, the quality of life for our citizens here in Ottawa County and Fairiesburg City. And again, as I always say, to ensure a safe and secure environment to work and live in and visit that, uh, when you pick up the phone and call, that we're there for you. Uh, I can't leave here tonight without thanking the fire department from Fairiesburg City. Uh, they're a great group to work with, the chief's great to work with. Collaboration amongst our deputies that are assigned here and then is outstanding. They sound odd, but they enjoy working together, uh, when they're out on calls. One last statement that I would like to make to you. I have taken an oath to uphold the constitution of the United States and the state of Michigan as well as to enforce state and local laws for over thirty-five years of my career here at the Ottawa County Sheriff's Office. The citizens of this county elected me as their sheriff. The citizens of this county elected me as their sheriff to uphold my oath of office and continue to deliver quality law enforcement and correctional services to this community. I will continue to direct my command staff, as well as my deputies, to uphold their oaths as well. We will continue to focus on victims of crime and providing a safe and secure county for our citizens that elected me. Policing must be done in a manner that is lawful and constitutional, but also in the way that maintains the consent of the people. So again, we are here to serve and do our best for the community. I know not every, you know, the old adjective is that everybody likes to see the fire department show up at their house, but they don't like to see law enforcement show up at their house. But again, I think our philosophy of community policing that started over thirty years ago makes a huge difference in our communities and the citizens that we serve. I think, as you know, Chief Deputy Derek Christensen is here with me tonight, the undersheriff could not be here, she's on vacation, but I think most of you are aware that we have been in talks with Spring Lake Township and Spring Lake Village and presenting some ideas about even more collaboration up here that can benefit, I believe, everybody and also have a cost saving. A lot of people look at me when I say cost save. But I think the plan makes sense to me, looking at it, we've thought through this very thoroughly. It may sound a little complicated, but when it comes to the logistics, let us handle that, that's what we're here for. But the chief deputy has a short presentation, talk about staffing level and possible collaboration of the three entities, Ferrisburg, Spring Lake Village, and Spring Lake Township.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, Sheriff. Good evening, and thank you for having me tonight. As the sheriff indicated, we've been working with our local partners to talk about staffing allocations, you know, with the partnership that we have with the city of Ferrisburg and currently with the village of Spring Lake, and Spring Lake Township has come into that. So we're going to give you just a ten-thousand-foot view, as the sheriff indicated, we do a lot of administrative management on the backend to ensure that staffing allocations are correct. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take those at the end or while I'm speaking, if you'd like to just jump in, that would be fine. So if I could have the next slide, please? So the snapshot, as you can see, the city of Ferrisburg and Spring Lake, what we did was our major contractor handles all of the records as well as technology. We set out to find some demographics that specifically provided. Passenger, is there a way for you to slide that over? Okay. Basically, while they're working on that, some of the things that we look at that you would be about would be obviously population, incidents in a certain area. In addition to that, we thought it would be important to bring some other metrics in place, thinking about what it would look like in a specific area, how densely populated it is, how many address points are in a specific area. If you think about forty acres of farmland versus forty acres that are consumed by residential or commercial property is a big difference. So we put all of these data points together, varies where the bill and Spring Lake Township, the numbers kind of vary. So from there, we worked with Sergeant Jake McKeller and the rest of our administrative team to try to come up with. Would it be beneficial for you to plug in?
I'll exit out of the presentation mode and scroll over. Can you zoom out at the bottom right?
Want to try to plug mine in?
I could be able to put it in present mode. Launch it.
We just put it in, just pull the PowerPoint up without present mode to...
Yeah.
Okay. No, that's okay.
Art, you want us to see?
Well, so basically, the metrics that are important for you to see is that we're looking at not only, but some people say you need this many police officers per population.
Oh, is that this one here?
So there's population of each of the communities that are listed, that's the top line, the road miles.
Craig, just click the corner of that and make it bigger for us. Click the top right corner and make it bigger. All right, I, we can see it, if you tell us what each line is.
Okay, so population's one, road miles is number two, the incidents from five thirty-one of twenty-three to six one, pardon me, of twenty-two to, flip that, six one of twenty-two to five thirty-one of twenty-three, so you've got roughly years' incident numbers. The next one is land area. The next is those address points that I talked about in each of the communities, and then as well as primary buildings. So from there, we combine, what we did was we worked with our command team and we asked Sergeant McKeller, the deputies that are currently working in these areas, some questions about feasibility of enhancing services as well as, you know, thinking about partnership. We also worked with our command team that manages resource allocation. So as you can see, the numbers populated is what we're calling District One, which is currently the area that is designated twenty-four-seven policing operation. So our team, working together, created two additional districts, which would obviously include District Two, which would be a portion of Ferrisburg and the northwest corner of Spring Lake Township, as well as District Three, which would be the east portion of Spring Lake Township in the village of Spring Lake. You may ask why? What we were trying to do is we were trying to make the numbers make sense so that it was equitable to be able to provide, still maintain the twenty-four-seven policing operations in the village of Spring Lake and the city of Ferrisburg that you have had for several years, while also looking at an opportunity to provide enhancement to add Spring Lake Township. As you can see, if you look at the land area by splitting the districts, we're pretty close with the area that would be covered. It's uncanny how the incidents, how close they are as well. And then overall, the road miles between sixty-three and sixty-nine is pretty close. I'd like to say that I had some influence in how Spring Lake was created, but I didn't. It just worked out that way. So as far as your, just to give you an idea of what your current policing services are, as I mentioned, you have twenty-four-seven police coverage, which includes eight full-time employees, deputies, and one sergeant who primarily works day-to-day operations during the day, but does make adjustments. The way that our scheduling is set up, we have an A squad and a B squad. For each of those, you need people to go around the clock twenty-four-seven, so a total of, total of two daytime, two nighttime around the clock. We also, in addition to that, have the two PM to two AM car, and that is also two-person to follow both the A squad and B squad. And then several months ago, when staffing changes took place, we looked at reviewing the one full-time position that had been left as a vacancy. Through a review with the Police Commission, working closely with both the city of Ferrisburg and the village of Spring Lake, we came together a few different times during the Police Commission meetings, take a look at what the numbers were as far as response times to make sure that we were getting there in an adequate amount of time and also providing adequate service. In addition to that, we always want to make sure that in addition to just responding to calls, we're looking at those areas in community policing where we can make sure that we have adequate patrols on North Shore Drive, additional services. So that's the current format. The current format for Spring Lake Township staffing, they currently have one designated full-time employee and then a third deputy. They've recently, through their budgeting process, have requested and has been approved, another full-time deputy. So right now, the full-time person is a EMT-trained community policing deputy. He primarily works ten-hour shifts throughout the week, he works eight AM to six PM and is involved in assisting fire service. In addition to that, we have a deputy that is a school resource officer, primarily working within the Spring Lake School District, who during his unallocated time in the schools, summer vacations, does additional patrolling township when school's not in session. That's kind of a unique partnership, one that, that we have with several of our partners in which is currently the school district pays a third, the township pays a third, Ottawa County actually contributes a, for his. So, and again, to reiterate, so right now, they have a one and one-third deputy. And they have room for, and approved, to have one additional. So what we've done is, to give you a high overview of what we are proposing and have been in discussion about, is that in Patrol District One, which is the current setup in Spring Lake Village, we'll continue to have the same policing practices twenty-four-seven, same supervisor will also be working a traditional schedule as needed. Very first, they'll have the six AM to six PM, as well as the timeframes, basically from six AM to two PM, they'll have the same service in each of those areas, as well as from two A to six AM. Right now, what happens is when the two-to-two car comes on, cars separate and they control both their areas separately. See no difference, there's no change currently. If you move towards a later time in the afternoon, the patrol districts free, what would happen is you would still have your traditional six A to two P and, pardon me, heavier, six AM to two PM. The two PM car would come on and the deputies would have the opportunity to work in. In addition to that, you would also have that eight AM to six PM Spring Lake Township that can float between the two. So you're basically, you're maintaining what you've had and you're adding additional opportunity to have what we call a float car in each district. We would continue the twenty-four-seven service in the city of Ferrisburg and the village of Spring Lake, and we would also continue with backfilling when industries are not working. This would not be the same for Spring Lake Township. You would continue to have the backfill, you would continue to utilize overtime budget twenty-four-seven. Any questions about that? I want to tell you that it's very difficult to explain a scheduling format, but to say that we want to ensure that you understand that you would not have any different law enforcement service that you currently have. This would be an opportunity potentially to have an additional full-time deputy working all three areas. And what that means is that means if there's a call for service, let's say someone has lost property and they want to speak to a deputy, I don't want the deputy to come here, they can just make a telephone. What happens now is that when, when our staff is on a call for service, that call waits. If you have additional staff members that are working during the busy hours, that's what we look at, we want to make sure that these are hours that are most useful when people need call or are calling for services, that a member of our department in another assigned area could actually pick up the phone and call that person after waiting. As you know, in priority calls, our deputies are going to come from anywhere and everywhere to make sure that we respond in a timely manner. That's kind of a little bit different, but we want to make sure that council, each board has an understanding that we're committed to looking at each of the areas to make sure that it's beneficial for everyone. Looking to the future, you know, we constantly are looking at, you know, our growth, our agency's growth and Ottawa County's growth. We've talked to the commission a couple different times about what would it look like if additional policing services were needed? So what we did was, we also added, can you slide a couple different times? Unfortunately, because of the screen, it's not very easy to see, but what I can tell you is that we plan to send documents to the messenger after the meeting so that you'll be able to actually, all of the content. So looking towards the future, there is a plan or a suggestion that, that we had made should the communities want to move to an eight person. So it would be eight full-time and the supervisor proposal. At this point, to be transparent in speaking to each of the communities, we really feel that the seven and one right now is adequate. And what that does for both of the partner agencies is that Spring Lake Township, if things move forward, what they would do is they would take their funding that they that they would fund a full-time deputy and that would actually come into the current package. Um, we're in preliminary, um, communication at this point, so, um, nothing is set in stone, but what that would do is that would, uh, cause a savings for both, um, city, Fairiesburg. Questions I can answer for you?
I have a couple of questions for you, thank you for, um. I'm a, uh, member of the Fairiesburg Fire Department. Um, and I've also, uh, been a, uh, police officer, so I'm quite familiar with the, what goes on as, as, uh. Um, my concern, and, uh, just from, I've been trying to sort out what, what the change is actually going to be on this from what we currently have. As far as, uh, response, is our officer, our, it looks like District Two is going to expand, uh, extend hit their, uh, patrol area? Or is that, and, uh, same thing with District Three?
Right.
Okay. My concern is, uh, if we've got a deputy, uh, you know, currently they're, they're supposed to be in the city of Fairiesburg or this, or village of Spring Lake. Uh, but they're up north by Apple and, and, uh, or Wilson or, uh, you know, somewhere on the north, north part of the, the township. And a call drops in Fairiesburg, then that's going to increase the response time to Fairiesburg. And I have, I have no problem, you know, when it comes to life, life safety calls, uh, you know, especially either it's the, our citizens or our, uh, police officers themselves, you know, cro- crossing the border and, and as a word, going from the city to the township. But again, my, my concern is if we have a couple of emergencies going on in, in the township and something drops in Fairiesburg, our citizens are not going to be, uh, they're, they're going to have to wait. So, uh, like right now with the fire department, we get a, we get a call, the only time our station's unmanned is if we get a call in the city, then all, we're all going to go to the scene, but we're going to still have somebody backfill our, our station. So there's, there's always coverage. You can't do that with the, necessarily with the, uh, you know, police officers because of the, the staffing and such. But could we perhaps go with, um, the majority of the patrol for the Fairiesburg officers in Fairiesburg?
That's what it is, sir.
Okay. And that, that's, that's what it would, would maintain that?
Correct. That wouldn't, no, there would be no additional or there would be no reduction in the hours of policing service that you currently have, it would, it would only be in addition. They would just have the opportunity, if a priority call came, to benefit the other area.
And, and a priority call being life?
Right.
It wouldn't be responding to a barking dog, plain or, or stolen trash can?
And like I said, that's, that's our job to administratively ensure through supervision that the boundaries are, are being met and your expectations are being met.
One of the places I worked as a police officer, we were restricted, uh, and one time we actually sat and watched a bank robbery because we could not cross the street, uh, to the other, to the county area, we had to stay in the city. So, um, I understand there needs to be some cooperation and I, I have no problem with that, just as long as we're not, our residents are not left, uh, having to wait for, for services.
Certainly.
Question, how has retention of officers been? Has there been an issue with employment and keeping officers long-term or have, have we had good luck with that?
Uh, to be quite honest, we're quite fortunate, um, we're a desirable, as you know, living in West Michigan, um, we're quite fortunate. Um, we have a lot of officers that are coming from other areas that desire to work for Ottawa County, just based on the opportunities that are provided and overall community support. Um, as you know, the climate's not fair, um, or it's a little bit cloudy in certain areas and we've been very fortunate, um, to can you, continue to have success in recruitment, um, at, at varying levels, um, those coming out of the academy, um, all the way up to seasoned officers that are, um, interested in, you know, moving maybe from a smaller department to an area where they have a little bit more opportunity to grow.
Have open recruitment or is there a recruiter for the county that reaches all to other departments looking for talent?
Certainly, um, we, we use our team, um, you know, of a hundred and forty-five officers, they're all recruiters, um, word of mouth, uh, at training and, and things like that goes a long way, but also, um, a lot of times we utilize some of our programming through our community policing initiatives, as well as our school resource officers to start that pipeline of internal talent in our schools all the way through, um, into college, as well as working with the Career Line Tech Center on innovative programs that bring high schoolers that are in public safety classes, to give them a snapshot and actually come and work with us. It's been, it's been a great success.
Any more questions? Thanks Derek, appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, seven B, discussion, take action if appropriate, place on the August seventh, city council agenda. Consideration drop of proposal, resolution regarding lease of one parking space at one seven five two zero Ridge Avenue to Anne Smith, which resolution shall remain on file with the city clerk for not less than fifteen days prior to consideration by the city council that a summary of the minutes of the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting in the city council be published in the Grand Even Tribune. Craig.
There's a, a person in Louisiana, Skene County who works for the state and they have a, a company car, but they're not allowed to take, they, they work in Ottawa and Alleghen County, they're not allowed to take the company car out of the counties that she works in. So she met with me and asked if she could use one parking space in, in the parking lot to either park her personal vehicle or her company vehicle here continuously while she, so she comes to work, she would pick up her company car, leave it in a personal vehicle here. When she turns to work, she would pick up her personal vehicle and leave her company car here. So there's space in the typically in the parking lot that it wouldn't be a problem that would hinder operations or residents parking in our parking lot. And so there's, uh, lease has been drawn up, it's been prepared by the city attorney, which shows that she wouldn't be allowed to have one parking space for rent of one dollar a month, or one dollar a year.
Does it matter like what spot it is or whatever is open?
We'll talk, we'll assign her a spot.
Okay.
So there, one of her vehicles, your company car or personal vehicle will be here twenty-four seven.
Okay, weekends too, so every day, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Your honor.
Yes.
Uh, just a question for Craig. Uh, I see a, uh, um, I guess it's a state of Michigan car parked at William Ferry Park all the time. Is that the same situation or is that a different one? And do we lease that?
To them, they're share-ride parking lot.
Okay.
So typically the park is closed at ten o'clock, but they have, when they arrange that parking lot, parking lot that they could keep one vehicle there.
So is this woman eligible for using that too or not?
I can check into that, yeah. She would, yeah, I can check into that, sure.
I don't, I, I guess it doesn't matter, I just know this parking lot gets full when there's baseball games and stuff like that.
Honor?
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the, uh, the lease. And if, uh, person finds that she can park over William Ferry Park, that would be fine as well.
So we're not approving the lease tonight, this would be, uh, like a first reading for the, because that's be on a publication for fifteen days. Yeah, so the, the motion would be to place it on the August seventh agenda for city council to consider.
Or? Okay, motion support for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Seven C, discussion, take action if appropriate, approve a bid from Wolf Kubota for twenty thousand sixteen dollars for a new riding lawnmower with a bagger.
So those was, uh, reviewed by city council back in April. At that time, city council requested another bid for a John Deere tractor. The public service department did get another bid and it was about a hundred and fourteen dollars less, but the, uh, public services department is still working and going with the E marks machine with the current model they have, uh, they've been really satisfied with it and does a nice job, uh, cutting the grass.
Honor? I'm going to make a motion that we, uh, we approve the bid from Wolf Kubota for twenty thousand sixteen dollars for the new riding mower with bagger.
Support. Motion support for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. Seven D, discussion, take action if appropriate, approval of proposal from Ancho Escavating for eight thousand three hundred fifty dollars for the Gene Street Ditch Project.
At back at the June meeting, we had a resident come in, uh, and she had a comment from her neighbor that they would like to have the gene ditch enclosed. Um, she had a couple of pictures showing the weeds growing in it and, uh, she indicated that her and her neighbor would be willing to, uh, maintain that lawn by mowing and so forth like that. So we did get a couple of bids, uh, the low bid was from Anchor Escavating for eighty-three fifty, and that would, uh, put a pipe in there, cover it up and top saw and see.
Yes.
Uh, Accurate Escavators mentions some Ottawa County permitting, is Anchor aware of those and will they handle those?
The property owner will, so the city will get those.
Okay. Uh, is, is there any differences other than that that you, uh, identified Craig?
No, the public service department has looked at these and they're recommending they're, they're excavating.
Honor, I'm going to make a motion, uh, to approve the proposals from Ancho Escavating for eight thousand three hundred fifty dollars for the Gene Street Ditch Project.
Your honor?
Yes.
I'll support, uh, but I'd like to amend it just to say Anchor, it's written as Ancho.
Anchor. Anchor, A-N-C-H-O-R. Okay, with the correction, further discussion?
You got that amendment, Tim?
Yes.
All right, I support.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. Seventy, discussion, take action if appropriate, to approve a proposal from Asphalt Paving Inc. for fifty thousand eight hundred dollars to repave Oak Street from Third Street to Fourth Street and repave Michigan Avenue. Craig?
At the last meeting in June, city council approved a contract with Alon Corporation to repave, um, Roosevelt Road here on the north side of the building. Those bids came in very favorable and so, uh, there's some extra money in the budget for that project, so we'd like to use some of that money and do a lot, extra paving, uh, on some streets here in the city. One section would be from, uh, Oak Street from Fourth Street to Third Street, uh, that's between Alamoada and Fifth Third Bank, uh, that's areas getting kind of, uh, rough. And then Michigan Avenue, uh, we'd like to pave the whole thing from one seventy-fourth Avenue to Ridge Avenue. Uh, that street is, is in bad shape and, uh, we have the funds to do this, so we've got a, a quote from API who was doing, uh, the pave work, subcontractor for Alon Corporation. So we'd like to use that money, this, this contract would be between the city and API, no engineer being involved, but the public services department would oversee the projects that we've done in the past with Carmen, Carmen Drive and so forth, and those projects turned out real well for us.
Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve the proposal from Asphalt Paving Inc. for fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand eight hundred dollars to repave Oak Street from Third, or Third Street to Fourth Street and repave Michigan Avenue.
Or? Motion support for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. F, introduction of ordinance number three-three-two in ordinance designating officers for the Fairiesburg Fire Department.
Your honor, the fire chief, um, is recommending that the staffing at the fire department be changed due to some, uh, recent changes in the staffing level over there. Currently there's, uh, two assistant fire chiefs and four lieutenants, he's recommending that we go down to one assistant chief and increase the lieutenants to five. So a new packet is the new job descriptions, uh, for each of those positions and, uh, draft ordinance that would, uh, change the staffing to one assistant fire chief and five lieutenants. I'm sorry, yes, for.
Okay, yes. Is there four lieutenants now Craig?
Great.
Okay, so we're adding one.
Yes.
Frank, exactly, um, why does the chief think that this is a requirement? See his recommendation, but there's no real info as to why he recommends this. It seems like we have less staff, but he wants more chiefs when we have lots of Indians right now, so I'm, I'm kind of confused on that, you know?
Supervisory would be about the same because we're, we're currently at two assistants and three lieutenants, we're five, now we're going to one assistant and four lieutenants, so it'd be the same supervisory, uh, staff. It's just that, uh, lieutenants, um, you know, the assistant chief and, and the ch- fire chief would, would be taking a little bit more responsibility due to the younger members of lieutenants.
The, uh, the, the difference between, uh, the, uh, assistant chief and the lieutenants is the assistant chiefs are more administrative and they're more the outside officers and the lieutenants lead the attack teams. And so this would give us an addition, uh, and also it's easier to get, bring the young people up and get them trained in the. Angelat, it just, uh, makes it a little easier for assignments.
I think it's a good idea. You guys have any other comments? It's just an introduction, we don't have to take any action. Okay, let's go on. Seven G, discussion, take action if appropriate, selection of the twenty twenty-three recipient of the Chamber Business Recognition Award. Do you guys have a chance to look at the list of the Fairiesburg businesses? Last year, Lepink's was the award recipient. Looks like it dates back to nineteen eighty-seven. Looks like it dates back to nineteen eighty-seven.
Be looking. Be looking for a recommendation, your honor.
Sure.
So I would like to, uh, nominate, um, Pine Street Cafe. I know they have, they got it back in ninety-six, um, but they do have a new owner. Has really stepped up and, and helped our community, uh, for those of you that don't know. They catered for the Fourth of July Pancake Breakfast, which had, uh, outstanding reviews, uh, so thanks, uh, Mayor Bleece for hosting that. Um, I, I think they're, they're growing and doing big things and it sends a welcoming message to, to their business.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I'll second that.
Okay. Looks like. Pine Street Cafe, way back, was an award winner nineteen ninety-six. When Loretta owned it. There is a couple I was looking at, Greek Tony's Pizza. I thought that was, they've been in, I think now six or seven years, I'm not quite sure how long. I thought that would be a good nomination, Greek Tony's Pizza. You guys have any other nominations?
I like those nominations too.
I do too.
Okay.
We have a lot of great businesses in the city.
Order for us.
Yeah, we could.
But I, I also like the, uh, the dance studio as well, they're, they're, they come in and they, they seem to be, be always busy, flourishing. It's a, it's a nice, where they're, where they're at. It's showing the, uh, it's nice yet having those cars there and not a vacant lot, so I think that.
Spotlight Dance Academy. Yeah, that's a good one too. Bill, did you have any ones in there that you liked?
I was gonna go with Pine Street Cafe myself.
Okay, Jerry, did you have any ones that you liked?
Yeah, uh, Pine Street or Tony's is, you know. I think Tony's would be a good pick, I don't think we've had Tony's before. Pine Street we've had in the past, even though there's a new owner. Yeah, I don't know, I, yeah, Tony's has been supportive in the past for the, uh, beautification committee, you know? Um, things that we've done with them, so, yeah, I, I like Tony's.
They've gave us, uh, gift cards for the Monster Bash, I think, and some other events we've had. Yep, well, we got Pine Street, we got Greek Tony's, and we got the Spotlight Dance Academy. We got three there. Okay. Um, yeah, so. Pine Street was the first one. So let's go to that one, so let's do a roll call vote. And then majority, uh, would need at least three, four, four out of six. And then we can go to Pine Street, or, uh, Pine Street first, then Greek Tony's and then Spotlight. So let's do, let's do that one first, Amber, do a roll call on Pine Street.
Okay. Councilmember Murdock. Councilmember Montgomery.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
No.
Councilmember Kate.
Yes.
Councilmember Sias. Mayor Bleece.
Uh, no.
For Greek Tony's. Councilmember Murdock.
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
No.
Councilmember Kate.
Yes.
Councilmember Sias.
Yes.
Mayor Bleece.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you wanna carry, or you said the first one that?
Yeah, so that one, yep, that in majority, so. Greek Tony's, okay.
I still like Greek, Greek, Greek Tony's.
Okay. Okay, um, H, discussion take action if appropriate, approve the mayor's proclamation designating October eleventh, twenty twenty-three as Business Recognition Day.
Yeah, I, I'll, uh, move to approve the mayor's proclamation designating October eleventh, twenty twenty-three as Business Rec- Recognition Day.
Okay, and then add Greek Tony's Pizza as the recognition award winner. Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carried. Seven I, discussion take action if appropriate to remove from the table mayor's appointments to the Planning Commission.
Honor, this time I'd like to make a motion to remove the mayor's, uh, appointments to the Planning Commission.
Okay, from the table?
From the table, yeah.
Okay. That's a motion, any support? Support. Motion support for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried. Uh, seven I, approve the mayor's appointment of Jordan Weber to the Planning Commission for a term ending July first, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, uh, approve the appoint, mayor's appointment of Jordan Weber to the Planning Commission for the term ending July first, twenty twenty-six.
Or. Motion support, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. We skip K, L, approve the appointment of Nicole Larabel to the Construction Board of Appeals for a term ending July first, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, I move to approve the appointment of Nicole Larabel to the Construction Board of Appeals for the term ending July first, twenty twenty-six. Support.
Motion support, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carried. M, approve the appointment of William Smith to the Construction Board of Appeals for a term ending July first, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, I move to approve the appointment of William Smith to the Construction Board of Appeals for the term ending July first, twenty twenty-six.
Motion support, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Seven N, approve the appointment of Dave Billinghurst to the Spring Lake, Lake Board for a term ending July first, twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Dave Billinghurst to the Spring Lake Board, Spring Lake, Lake Board for the term ending July first, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion support, further discussion?
I have a question, your honor.
Yes.
He lives in Muskegon?
No, he lives in Ferriesburg. Cove Street.
William Smith.
Oh, I thought you were talking about Dave Billinghurst.
No.
William Smith, hold on.
Did I ask that too late, I'm sorry.
That, that is correct.
We already passed that, I was, I was looking at the other addresses, I'm sorry.
Is he able?
Yes, he's a.
Yeah, okay, all right, sorry.
Yeah, looks like he lives in Muskegon, but, okay. Uh, okay. Mr. Billinghurst for the Spring Lake Lake Board, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carried. Seven O, discussion take action if appropriate, scheduled work session is a regular agenda item, August seventh, twenty twenty-three. Craig, what do we have on the list here? Electronic packets, it looks like.
Yeah, so this came from the rec commission, uh, uh, or, or the tree board, uh, tree board slash rec commission. Uh, we are eager to convince everyone to go paperless. As we all know, we get boxes and boxes of paperwork every year and, uh, seem a little hypocritical being a tree city USA and, uh, killing this many trees. Um, so we would, we would like to, uh, I would like to have a conversation with that, I know, uh, some council members have also reached out about that same issue. So.
Yeah, I agree with you, we, some of this, we can just do electronic emails.
Yeah.
Uh, anything else for the work session? No? Okay, we can always add some later, maybe. Okay, down to eight, public comments. No public comments, nine report, whoa, 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 all right, Jake.
Jake Sterling, one, six, two, six, nine, Suffolk Drive, Ferriesburg, Michigan. Uh, I haven't come to these meetings to address much of the planning commission stuff. I, I did wanna say that I've met recently with Mayor Bleece, uh, about it. I appreciate him taking the meeting, thought we had a good conversation. I don't think we maybe moved forward with anything, but I do appreciate him meeting with me and having a discussion. I also reached out to Mayor Protim O'Donnell, asked him to meet with me, I've yet to hear from him. Um, and to be honest, I think that as a member of your constituency, I think that you owe me a chance to talk to me. And I think it's unfair for you to ignore my request to speak to you. I, I purposely kind of stay away from these meetings, I find it to be kind of hostile and dysfunctional. Um, in particular around my, my planning commission appointment, in particular from comments from Mr. O'Donnell. Um, there's a lot of false statements that have been made about my eligibility. I heard Joe Lyons state earlier in the meeting and why I came down here that I was ineligible due to a nepotism clause in the charter. And so I wanna get it on public record now. Craig, am I eligible to serve on the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Does my wife serving on the Recreation Commission prevent me from serving on the Planning Commission?
The nepotism in the charter refers to officers of the city. A recommission chairperson is not an officer of the city.
Because I've heard several times, I've heard Mr. Lyons suggest in planning commission meetings and in city council meetings that I am ineligible. And I've also heard others say that I was ineligible because I didn't submit my application on time. Was I, am I eligible, was, was my application turned in on time?
Yes.
Okay, so my takeaway from that is, is that there are people trying to disqualify me from technicalities. And I heard earlier Mayor Protim O'Donnell trying to get money from our city attorney to try to nullify William Montgomery's candidacy on a technicality. I'm starting to see a bit of a pattern here where people in our government use city resources, taxpayer money, to attack people they don't like. I think that's very unfortunate, I think we should all take notice if this is happening. Thank you.
Mr. Sterling? Uh, I'd be more than happy to meet, meet with you after the meeting tonight.
Unfortunately, I'm not available after the meeting. You could have answered my email in the last ten days and we could have set up this appointment at any time.
My schedule is, is very, uh, full and I, but like I said, I, I'm more than happy to, we're gonna be shortly done here, uh, to meet with you and discuss.
You're more than welcome to respond to the email that I sent you more than ten days ago and we can set up a time and meet if you'd like. I'm still waiting for that reply. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comments, Regina?
I've spoken before about procedures being violated. You know, if a procedure is dirty, everything that results from that is dirty. If you try to go after our ordinances, our board appointments, um, our candidates, how much lower can we sink? I don't know if you know it, but Justin Robach got an anonymous note on his desk that some of our candidates had not properly filed. Can you get any dirtier than that? Can you? There are forces at work here, behind the scenes, that in, indicate to me on the good side desperation. But this is frightening to me. It's like something from Nazi Germany, if you don't like somebody, just go after them. And you'll never know what hit you because you never know where it's coming from. My petitions were supposedly inappropriate because I didn't file a notice. That's totally misrepresented and it's not true. We have an attorney here, we have the Justin Robach, and we have the state election board saying these people are properly registered to be on the ballot. When you mess with the, uh, with the petitions and with nominations and with people standing to be elected, that's what Hitler did. He just wouldn't let you in if you're gonna vote against him. This is frightening and we really need to do something about it. And there, there's some of you that can stand up against this. I don't care if people attack me per- personally, I'm tough. My dad raised four girls and he didn't raise any sissies, I guarantee you. But when you go after boards and you go after our ordinances and you go after the procedure of election, that's more than I can handle alone and we all need to pitch in to do something about it.
Any further comments, Joe?
Well, I've heard my name mentioned again. By the way, this is Joe Lyons, one, six, eight, five, seven, Virginia Avenue in Ferriesburg. Mr. Sterling, uh, has made some comments and I thought it was interesting that, uh, uh, on May fourth, when there were five or, was it six, five or six candidates, uh, that were, uh, uh, being interviewed, that Mr. Sterling wrote a message, said he wasn't available. And it read as follows, please forward this statement to the Planning Commission and City Council if appropriate. Please read it during the meeting tonight so that my statement is in the public domain. I will not be attending the Ferriesburg Planning Commission tonight. I appeared in front of the Ferriesburg Planning Commission approximately one year ago to present my application and answer questions and, and nothing on my end has changed since then. At that time, the Planning Commission recommended me unanimously, unanimously for the appointment to the commission, but Mayor Scott Bleece has repeatedly refused to appoint me. And in the process, he and Mayor Protim, Tim O'Donnell have unjustly called me biased and unqualified in the public domain. I ask that the Planning Commission not recommend anyone else for appointment until Mayor Bleece adheres to your recommendation and gives me an opportunity to be voted on this, on, by the city council for appointment to the Ferriesburg Planning Commission. Mayor Bleece's refusal to act on the Planning Commission recommendation is disrespectful to volunteers serving on the Planning Commission and it undermines the functionality of city government. Now, there may be some truth to that. Um, but the fact remains, and I did bring this, this, uh, uh, topic up. We have a charter in this city. The charter is our constitution, the constitution of the city of Ferriesburg. And it states, rather, uh, Mr. Bessenger wants to, uh, to, uh, uh, make his judgment on it or not. And I know there are some, uh, issues that, uh, are contrary to this, that there are some, uh, spousal and, and, uh, on committees. But our planning commission is something a- above and beyond. And the charter says that you can't have your spouse on one committee and you on another. It's just that simple. It's there in black and white. And an officer of the co- of the community is anyone who is on a committee or on this council. That's, I don't know. We, we can get Mr. Bissonnet to say, no, that isn't true, but Mr. Bissonnet has made a number of bungles on the, uh, in, in, uh, the recent, uh, in the recent past. And I'm kinda tired of that as well. And I'm kind of tired of that as well. So, um, maybe we ought to reconsider and, and one other thing I think you folks have, uh, have failed to, to recognize. Is this is the mayor's appointment. If he doesn't want Mr. Sterling in that position, by golly, he doesn't get it. Now, that's just how it is. Those are the rules. That is our constitution. So where are we going with this?
Thank you. Other public comments? Jake?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify in the public domain here. Craig, am I eligible to serve on the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, and I just also, looking at the agenda tonight, I saw Jordan Weber got approved for the planning commission. Doesn't her husband serve, uh, on a board in the city?
Yes, Brownfield.
You know, I didn't hear, Joe, I didn't hear any uproar from you about that appointment earlier, but, but only uproar about my appointment. I'm the only one that that, that your fake charter interpretation applies to? Is that, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Sterling, I will be here at four o'clock tomorrow afternoon for a meeting. If you'd like to stop by, I'll meet with you then.
Lisa?
Lisa Royce, one, seven, seven, Verne, Ottawa. I do vaguely remember, um. His name's Fred Bryant. Um, Craig and his wife both, well, they keep mission together on the same. Correcting that, neighbors of probably Mr. Lyons back in the day.
Correct.
So, this has to do with.
Okay. Any further comments? Yes, sir. Come on up to the podium.
My name's Dave Barnoski and I voted for Sheldon. It's been an interesting first meeting with you here in Ferries. I'm the, I'm the founder of a Facebook group called Ottawa. Founded the day after the first meeting. The Ottawa Impact Commissioners. As commissioners on January third. Just passing forty-one hundred members. We're forming. Um, groups in each district. Each commissioner's district. Intend to, um. And yours, the tenth district formed recently and we hope to have those, those groups. Actively pursue recruitment of candidates. Um, and, um. You're lucky. Or, I don't know if I have to thank you or that you're lucky that you had a great candidate who saved himself. But Roger Bergman is one of the two outstanding commissioners on the Ottawa County Commission right now. Um. I know there'll be people here who could possibly disagree with me on that. That's the way democracy is supposed to work. But. I'm hoping that by bringing this all up and letting you all know that I exist. Know, letting you know that we are, I am going to be in recruiting people from our group. To start attending your meetings regularly, you'll start seeing people, they might start, hopefully be wearing these little buttons. I'm giving out these little buttons to our. People so you, we can recognize each other in the wild, so to speak. Just to see good governments being done. So I wanted you to know that we exist. That we're trying to make sure that good government's being done. And ask that hopefully. You all raise your views and help us. Make sure that good government is, continues to be, or is again being done on the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners in the near future. Because as I see it today, it's not. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is, in public comment, it is generally not a back and forth.
I wanted your, I wanted your contact.
I will stay after.
Any more public comment? Hearing none, number nine, report, city manager.
No report.
City council members, uh, Debbie?
We had a successful Fourth of July picnic. I think we had more kids there than we've ever had. We gave out all our prizes. It was great. The weather was perfect. The food was wonderful. It was just a big success and we worked hard for it. So we want to thank the city for the support. Thank you.
Okay, Jerry?
Um, no report, just, uh, thanks to the beautification committee for putting on a great Fourth of July and Gateway Church. I know that they, uh, they helped out a lot in the past couple of years, so thanks to them as well.
Okay, Bill?
No report.
Uh, Will?
Yeah, a big shout out to beautification committee for their turnout for the parade and for the, uh. Uh, picnic afterwards, uh, letting everyone know, uh, rec commission will be hosting their second, um, food truck night of the week. Uh, with, uh, Low's Low BBQ with, um. Let's Talk About It and with a food truck or a, uh, ice cream truck as well, that was just added. Uh, as well as some live music from, uh, Ferriesburg, Ferriesburg's own LV Mobley and the Coots, uh, so. Uh, big shout out to her. She's my neighbor and she's a fantastic singer. Um, so I encourage everybody to come and check that out Wednesday. William Ferry Park from Six State, end of report.
Uh, Tim?
Uh, yes, I'd like to add my great, congratulations to the beautification committee. Excellent. Very well attended. Things went very well. Uh, I will be, I've got a board review meeting here tomorrow afternoon. This will be the just of July, uh. Meeting for, uh. Just the, uh. Correcting any paperwork. Making sure all the dots are dotted and, or eyes are dotted or whatever it is. And, uh. The, uh. Uh, parking spaces, uh, I noticed that the, uh, Ottawa Sands does not have parking and it looks like they forced the parking over onto Coast Guard Park. Craig, have we addressed that with any rentals agreement with? With the county like we have already?
This is just a temporary, until they get their parking lot put in.
Okay. Um, Regina?
I am controlled by no one. I make my own decisions based on, no, 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 I'm speaking. I am, I make my own decisions. I make them based upon fact. And. All my, and research. And whether somebody wants to stay around, uh. Someone comes up and asks a question. Accuses me of something, I'm gonna respond and that, again, I guess that's argument to, defending myself. So, and, uh. Regina, I, I, I'm answering your questions. And the statements that you made. You, you asked why I opposed your appointment to the planning commission. I don't believe you are qualified. No, I did not. I am not a lawyer. I never said that. I have a degree in criminal law. I never passed the bar, never took the test. I decided, decided to join a more honorable profession. In the public safety field. The, uh. As an elected official, I am required. To bring forth any violation of any rules, regulations. Or violation of ordinances by members of either the council. Or board members. If I do not, I can be held liable as same as they are. That is what I'm doing and I'm basing it not on any personal. Uh, agenda. I do not have a personal agenda. And I, it is on the people that are running for office need to hold themselves to a higher standard. Which means they need to follow the rules. If the rules are not followed, then that needs to be noted. Regina, you attacked, you attacked me when I was running for office. No, you attacked me, you filed a complaint with the AG. And. And that's one of the things, now, I will take, I will take that, your insults, I don't care. But you, but, uh, there are other members that will not do that. And that's because I have a higher ethical standard. The, uh. No. That was addressed and resolved. End of report.
Okay. Um, I would like to also thank beautification committee for the, uh, Fourth of July parade and the picnic. Mayor's breakfast was well attended. Um, MPO policy committee meeting for July is canceled. Uh, I did attend the North Shore Association Ice Cream Social July eighth. And I had a lot of good comments on the speed tables. Um, they were very happy they're in. They said they've noticed a huge difference in the speed of the traffic. Delivery trucks, um. Construction trucks, trailers, boat trailers. And their concern is safety of the kids and the residents, which I agree with. Uh, end of report. Motion adjourned?